Lead us in our pledge, so if y'all would join us for our pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, bro. Okay, at this time, we need to have approval of our agenda. Do we have any additions or changes at this time?
We just want to change the order of do the commendations before the special presentation because we have several students that I think need to get to a ballgame.
Okay, hearing the changes, I will ask for approval.
I make a motion, we accept as change is needed.
All right, need a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Five oh. All right, I hope you had an opportunity to look over the minutes from our last meeting. Do we have any corrections, additions, or not well asked for approval?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor? Five oh. All right, this is the time we've been looking forward to.
Okay, always my favorite part of the agenda is recognizing students because that is why we're here, is to honor students and to see them excel. And we have a room full of students and parents tonight to celebrate, and so thank you for being here. We keep thinking we build the boardroom big enough, and you all keep filling it up, which is a great, great situation to have. We're going to start with the Crescent FFA and recognize them as the 2025 three-star premier chapter. There's only nine of these chapters in South Carolina, and they will also be recognized at the national convention. So when I call your name, I think we have the officers here, when I call your name, we'll ask you to come up. We will start with Jay Holtclough. Then we have Sue Anna Shaw. Michaela Rodney. Braylon Henderson. Yeah, but I somehow lost two. Did I give anybody more than one certificate?
These things do stick good. I hope I signed. Did I sign them?
You did, you did. I knew we left two out here, Ryder King. And Cade Simpson. We're also glad that their advisors, Brantley Colwell and Philip Rhodes, are here tonight, so we'll ask you all to come up for a picture. I just want to say that you all represent Crescent so well, and I love to see you in the blue jackets, so congratulations. Okay, next item on the agenda, and I will tell you, it's been a while since we've had this number of perfect SC Ready scores. And I think we had 12 perfect scores representing 10 students because two of our students had two perfect scores in different areas. So we're going to start with SC Ready math. Okay, we have a perfect score, SC Ready math, Lee Allen. Come on up. Dylan, they're all pushed together worse than other math people. I was trying to keep them about here. Okay, we'll do them this way. Then we have a perfect score in SC Ready ELA, Lillian Osborne. Another perfect score in ELA, Kennedy Jansen. Okay, perfect score, SC Ready ELA, Eliza K. Long. SC Ready ELA, Axton Sin. SC Ready ELA, Finn Botts. SC Ready ELA, Lily Seawright. SC Ready ELA, Jana Eubanks. SC Ready Math, Elise Raisin.
Have us at the football stadium next time.
That's gonna be a great problem to have. Okay, and our SC Ready Science, perfect score, Finn Botts. I'll let you get Finn again.
Wouldn't get any, congratulations. I might have to come around a corner.
I think you need to. Okay, SC Ready Science, Lee Allen. There's another two-timer. And then another SC Ready Science, Carter Wentzky. Okay, I do want to recognize that their principals are here tonight in the room, and I know they're very proud of them, and we have some of the staff members too. And I think it means a lot that you all came tonight to see your students recognized because you're a part of their success. So we thank you, parents and teachers and administrators for being here, and let's give them a round of applause as we get ready to take pictures. Okay, we have also started doing accommodation to recognize a bus driver of the month each month. And we are fortunate to have some outstanding bus drivers in our district. And, you know, a bus driver is typically the first employee in the morning that a child will see, and the last one they'll see in the afternoon if they ride a bus morning and afternoon. So they serve a great role. But have something that was written by Ms. Dodd about this particular one. I would like to nominate Dylan Cross. He works hard to handle situations when they arise, and he deals really well with the students who ride his bus. He communicates well with our administration and allows us to speak with students before immediately writing a referral when possible. He's allowing students to choose to make better choices, which is so important, and this shows he is willing to go the extra mile for our students. So it's our honor to recognize Dylan Cross as the September Bus Driver of the Month. Okay, we have, we're gonna recognize two of our board members also tonight in a special recognition. Board members earn levels for certain trainings that they complete. So tonight, we first want to recognize Mr. Marty Watt. He's our board chair, and he's recognized as being in Level Three. For Level Three, you have to accumulate 100 total points, and so he's recognized tonight with a certificate and a gold pin for Level Three. Okay, stay up here, Mr. Watt. You're not getting out of the picture. Okay, and then also Hannah Arnold is being recognized as Level One. To achieve Level One, you have to accomplish 25 cumulative points. So she's receiving her Level One certificate. I will tell you that there are six levels in all, and so it's quite an accomplishment to move through the levels. I want to say once again, thank you so much for coming tonight, parents, grandparents, teachers, administrators, students. We appreciate you being here for this special recognition. We are so proud of you. Having perfect scores, especially on SC Ready, is not an easy task, and so I'm just so proud of you and appreciate you. Now, at this time, if you would like to stay for the whole meeting, you are more than welcome to stay. But if not, this would be an appropriate time to step out.
Thank y'all. Appreciate you very much. Thank you for all you do. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for what you.
Your property.
Yeah, we got, we're supposed to be closing on seven more here soon, and I texted with someone this weekend about, we got about 15 left. About maybe possibly some more of that, so I don't.
I got, I got some folks wanting to buy that little, them lots that I got down there that we brought on the song.
Let me tell you about that.
And I told them I'd take ten a piece for them. They got safety tanks on them. I think it's worth it.
How many acres is it?
1.06 each. I mean, they buildable lots. You know what I'm saying?
We didn't have any.
We didn't have any citizens comments, no.
All righty, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Moore.
All right, sounds good. First off, by taking a look at general fund's performance through the end of September. So through the end of September, our expenditures exceed our revenues by $1,660,905. That's in the ballpark where we expect to be when we compare to last year. A little bit behind last year, about $90,000, but still got a long ways to go. From just a pure percentage standpoint, things appear to be on track. Revenues take ahead, and then on the spending side, pretty happy for the most part where we are. A little, maybe a touch higher on payroll costs and those budgets, a couple of things that play, come into play there. We've had, it seems like a little higher than normal certificate upgrades at the start of the school year. And then also, every year, we've had a budget for a speech therapist position at elementary school, of course. We didn't fill that, and then that gets reallocated to our purchase services whenever we have to contract that out. So some things like that may attribute to a little bit higher than the normal percentage on the payroll costs. On the revenue side of things, everything seems to be coming in about like where we'd expect it to be this point in the year. Property tax revenue's starting to show up now in the current year, now that we've finished all of our accruals to the prior year. On property tax side of thing, one notable allocation we received normally around this time of the year is the fee and loo money for Santee Cooper. That actually came in in October, so we'll see that next month. But that did come in about $22,000 higher than what it did the prior year, so a little bit of good news there as we move forward. And we did have a little bit of time indifference, so last year, we didn't get until November. So that will be a timing difference we'll see on next month's, next month's report. Did want to touch on state-aided classrooms. So with state-aided classrooms for traditional districts, we have basically two points in the year where we get measured, and that's our 45th day and 135th day. Our 45th day was this past Tuesday, and I'll touch on that in a minute. But for charter schools, they actually get payment updates after the fifth day. Traditional districts state their 135-day numbers, charter schools update the fifth, and the payment allocations get updated. So after the fifth day enrollment update, and we saw in this past month's allocation, our allocation got reduced by $47,000. And that's because of the charter, charter schools growing. So just, it should all kind of wash out in the end once the 45-day numbers get updated for the traditional districts, which we'll see in January. But just kind of illustrates what happens to a district when you stay stagnant more or less and the others around you grow. I know there's several other factors that come into play, but that, that kind of hit us right there with just the charter schools. And kind of for a point of reference, charter schools make up about 10, 11% of the statewide enrollment. So seeing, seeing a little bit of growth there impacted us negatively. On the 45-day numbers, so we came in, just for a point of reference, we finished last year with an average day of membership of 2,643. Our 45-day number, we came in at 2,611, so that's a reduction of 32 students. Our weighted pupil units, which is what drives our state-aided classrooms calculation, we don't have the final numbers with this, with the 45th day being less than a week ago. We're still waiting from the state on some of these add-on waitings, so don't have the exact number for that. But if we were to duplicate that one number we're missing, it would come in at, sorry about that, 4,458. It is kind of where that would number be if, if that stays the same. With that being said, if you recall, during the budget session, we budgeted with anticipation of reduced enrollment just in preparation for this. So the ADM that we budgeted with was 2,608. Again, we're at 2,611. And the weighted pupil units we budgeted was at 4,445, so we hope that that's, that the actual number's gonna be a little bit higher than that. So we're kind of at that level where we, where we projected to be, or didn't want to go any lower than, if you will. And again, we're still waiting on what the rest of the state does too. That'll, that'll impact us as well. All that to say, in terms, to put into dollars, after that charter school update that hit we took, we basically need that reduction of enrollment to impact us at $225,000 or less to be able to meet our revenue budget for the state-aided classrooms. Again, we won't know that for sure till January, but that's kind of the dollar figure we're gonna be looking out for over the next couple of months. So just really wanted to highlight that on the general fund side of things. Any questions related to general fund?
Quick question.
Yes.
10% statewide charter school enrollment, you said it's up a little bit. What was it previous year?
That, that 10% was, that was their percentage of the enrollment at the 135th day last year. I don't have the numbers of what it is now after the fifth day and the 135th day. Normally, that doesn't come out until all of it comes out.
Trying to get a feel for where we were, where we thought we would be and now, you know, current.
But one thing, we haven't lost students to a charter school, really. It's, but since Gray Collegiate opened another campus in Chapin, like Lex Richland Five has lost a ton of students, and so.
That, I don't, I can't say for certainty, my, my understanding of it is that's probably to accommodate those new schools and get their enrollment as accurate as possible to get them up and running sooner rather than later, rather than making them wait till January based off of projections. That's, that's my best guess as to why they do a fifth day for charter and not for traditional. But it should level all out once we get all caught up, so. I don't believe so. I mean, well, Belt and Prep is one. Is that the only one?
The only other ones would be ones that were purely online, but brick and mortar, I think Belt and Prep is the only one.
I think that's right.
Did we take this type of hit last year, and then we lost 45,000 state-aided classrooms last year, or did we take a hit like that?
Last year, we had a, we saw a jump at the 45th day. Yeah, we increased our enrollment last year. Off the top of my head, I want to say we were at 2,663, I think was the number. We were at a 45th day, and it came down a little bit. So, but the prior 135th day, we were under 2,600, so we saw, I think it was like 85 student jump from FY24's 135 to the 45 this past year. So, yeah, so this is the first time in the past couple of years that it's actually taken a dip. But we did budget it just to be conservative sake, to help protect us for something like this.
Because I don't remember taking a dip like that, that's why.
Right, right, yeah, it's, it's, it's a big impact. There's so much money flowing through this one formula, so. Any other questions about general fund? All right, so for the sales tax, so since we last met, we have received two allocations, one for August, one for September. August, we received $305,545.62, and in September, actually this morning, we just received this one, $309,752.14. To put in the, in perspective for the, for the grand scheme of things, August was our sixth largest collection we've received to date, and September was the fourth largest. So not, typically not the time of year you expect to see big spending through the summer months, but it continues to, to perform well for us. And looks good, as you can see there, we're getting for the first three months of the year, $61,000 going to service debt, and then 244 to 247,000 available for our capital use allocation. So it's doing really, really well for us, and we'll hope it continues. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Moore? Keep it coming.
Thanks, sir.
All righty, this time, we will have a presentation by Ms. Christie.
As Christie's coming, as you remember, last year, we hired our, our own designated mental health counselor. And one thing we tasked her to do was to be a counselor, but also to set up a program. And I think tonight, you will see that she is doing both very well.
Thank y'all for letting me spend a few minutes talking to you about both who I am and what I'm getting to do in the district. I'm privileged to serve here in A3, and I will say it as I start, but I'll also say it as I conclude. I love what I get to do every day. I love that I get to come to work here. I choose to work here because I love it here. I drive 50 minutes one way to work every day and back, so I do that because I want to be here, not because I have to be. So thank you for that privilege and for letting me do that. I want to talk about a few things this evening, one, who I am and what I, what I do, but also that we're trying to develop a proactive approach to mental health in our district and how we facilitate care. I'd like to introduce you to our team and then talk a little bit about stats and show you a little bit of what we've done. So to start with, let me just introduce who I am and that I am the Mental Health and Wellness Coordinator for our district. And I do a list of fun things. The job is big, and it is, can be consuming at times, but I get to facilitate and manage all the referrals, the crisis of events, psychoeducation and counseling for our district, which basically means that I'm managing, and we'll talk about some numbers in just a minute, anywhere from 230 to 250 referrals at a time, crisis events that are happening at all five schools. I get the privilege of doing psychoeducation for our district, which means I'm talking with staff, I'm talking at school orientations. I'm doing assemblies, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but, and then I serve at Crescent High School and Sims two days a week, each of those on top of that, so doing counseling for students. I carry a full caseload and love that I get to help students, staff, and the district as a whole. I also manage all the adjunct services for the district, which means I do, we have multiple agencies that work in our district, both the Office of Mental Health, Stepping Stones, County Board, as well as Epworth, and we've just, we've just brought Epworth in, which means we've got a lot of staff that are in and out of our buildings, and my job is to make sure they show up and do their job. And to make sure that we have staffing meetings every month at every school with every clinician present with all of our guidance counselors. And one of the reasons we're doing that is to make sure that no kids fall through the cracks. We were seeing previously lots of kids who might get a referral, and then they weren't getting seen, and that's just not gonna happen here. And that's, I'm gonna make sure that it doesn't happen here. It's too important. And so I manage all the direct referrals to make sure they get to the right entities and are seen by the right clinicians to get the right care all the time. I also am our own little crisis management team. That wasn't really on my radar when I first started this job, to be honest. But just to be frank, we have discovered that it's hard to get other agencies really to show up when we have kids in crisis, when they're suicidal or they've got something going on, we can call mobile crisis, but they may or may not show up. We can send them to the ED, but they usually just send them home. So my job is to make sure they get the care that they need often, to make hospitalizations happen for them. And a lot of times, that means making phone calls to places like Carolina Behavioral Health in Greer or setting up appointments for them to be able to be seen with psychiatrists in our area or being sure that aftercare is happening for them if they have been hospitalized, and then to do reentry meetings with them. One of the things that we started when I came on was that every kid who is out, or student who is out of school for any length of time, even if it's just a day for mental health, we do a reentry meeting with that parent and that child and the school admin and guidance to see how we can best serve them as they reenter in, because school is often a stressor. But also to be able to communicate, like, what happened, what kind of treatment did they get, are they safe? If they return to our school, can we guarantee that they're not gonna harm themselves or somebody else if they come back in our buildings? So it really is a protection for both the student, but also for our school district as a whole, to be sure that someone who's struggling with their mental health doesn't come back in our building and hurt themselves or somebody else. Now, we'll say, we can't predict that, right? I'm not, I don't have any magic pixie dust that just decides whether or not they will. But we're doing our very best to be sure that we can do everything, do our due diligence to make sure every kid is protected, but also every kid is taken care, taken care of. I do staff development and support, which means some professional development. I've done the roundtables at Crescent High School. I've done orientation for the schools at Sims. I worked with a lot of the staff orientation this year. I spoke at three of the schools this year as we started. And I love getting to support our staff because, as Ms. Hip has charged me, we want mental health to start from the top down, right? And if our, if our staff are healthy and doing well, then we. And if our, if our staff are healthy and doing well, then we pray that our students will be as well. I spend about 50% of my time doing counseling and 50% doing everything else that I've just talked about. And I, I code that on my calendar, so that if my calendar is not 50% green, then I need to make some changes so that I'm spending time with kids. I don't want to just manage data, but I want to be seeing kids, so I, I protect that time. We do a lot of community-wide educational, you may have seen us out at the football game this, this past year doing suicide prevention and awareness speaking events to bring education of that. I'm on the Suicide Prevention and Awareness Committee for OMH, the Office of Mental Health. And so, we're working to get out in the community and make aware, make people aware that we are in all five schools and offering mental health to anyone who needs it and fighting for that. And then, one of the things that our district, and to my knowledge, the only district that I know that offers this, we're offering counseling for our staff. Again, if we've got teachers or staff who are struggling with their mental health in any way, shape or form, we want to take care of them so that they can be their best in the classroom. So, in a nutshell, that's what I get to do on any given week. The proactive approach that we're taking to mental health is because of the message that you'll see on the far right of the screen here, and I say it to my staff all the time. If we don't show up, children are not cared for. We are in a district where there's not access to a lot of mental health care. And so, if my clinicians don't show up, they don't get cared for. Kids don't get taken care of. And so, I fight really hard every day to make sure my staff shows up, that they see kids. I've got two really specific rules that I'm not gonna bend on. That is, show up and see kids, do your job. It feels like a low bar, but you would be surprised how many clinicians we've had previously in the district who didn't show up and weren't seeing kids. And so, we're really fighting to make sure that happens. I talked a little bit already about the psychoeducation, the professional development. I'm doing Healthy Habits Quarterly at Sims for Ms. Wilson. And we're trying to educate kids on how to have good mental health, trying to be proactive, not just reactive. We're not just responding to problems. We want to help them be better before they get sick. Again, we've spoken at the athletic events, and then even this week, I'll be speaking at Crescent High School all day on Wednesday in Ms. Holbrook's class for Workplace Wednesday, just helping teenagers as they prepare to become adults. Adults do hard things and we have to prepare them to do hard things. And so, I'll be in the classroom all day on Wednesday working on that. We have a clinician at every school, every day. I started a year ago, we did not. And I have fought hard to get someone in the school every day, all day. That hasn't always been an easy task. But, a year, a little more than a year ago, we had two OMH workers and myself. And now, we have seven full-time clinicians that are in district and they're carrying full caselots. One of those is new through Epworth Counseling Center, and they are our new special education mental health counselor. And they're just new to our district, they just came on board the 18th of August. We have three stepping stone clinicians, one county board clinician and one office of mental health clinician. We also employed or purchased what we call an electronic health record for our documentation. It is both FERPA and HIPAA compliant. And we are challenging all our guidance counselors, as well as our clinicians, to, to keep good documentation. It is what's gonna keep us out of trouble legally in the long term. So, we, all of our district personnel keeping appropriate documentation, but it's also secure. No one can see it, no one reads it, but we need to be sure we have it in case we're, we're ever in a fix and somebody brings a lawsuit. I'm able, through that electronic medical, it's a medical records or health records, to run reports, to track issues. I'll show you some picture of that in just a second. I can, I can track what specific issues are happening at each school. I can also run a report and see how many behavior threat assessments we've had, how many suicide assessments we've had to do each month. And I can share that with the school administration if they want it. I do share it with our guided staff, with our staff meetings. This particular EHR, one of the reasons we used it is because it grabs all of the aggregate information from Power School, which means when we're doing charting, we don't have to add, we don't have to put all the information in every time we're documenting something. And then, that, that same information will follow the kid from K4 till 12th grade if necessary. So, we really are trying to take a proactive approach to get some things in place. And I, I think we're making great strides in that.
One thing to add here before she moves on, the, the three stepping stone counselors and Epworth, that's at no charge to the district. And so, in, in expanding these number of healthcare professionals we have in here, we, it didn't add anything to our budget, but we got more services. And Ms. Upton was a prime part of getting those contracts in place.
So, they work off patient care hours, and so, the billable hours that they can bill for those hours, that's how their income is provided, so it doesn't, it's a cost to the district. So, we're, one of the things I do is manage referrals and still take care. These numbers have changed as of today, but as of Thursday, we have seen 227 referrals in the first 43 days of school. That's a lot, to be honest. And one of the things I didn't mention was we implemented last year a digital referral system and a quality assurance system. And part of why we did that was, one, we were spending a whole lot of time doing paperwork. And so, it was easier for us just to implement a digital referral system that's secure. We developed that, and I've got lots of the other districts who are asking me about it and are wanting because their, their people are realizing this, this is an asset. The quality assurance, it helps us follow closures so that I can track whether a kid's being seen and seen appropriately and in a timely manner. We want to make sure that kids aren't just being seen, but they're being seen regularly and that they're not just being seen once every six weeks, but that they're getting the appropriate care that they need and the quality assurance helps us with that. We've had 26 suicide assessments in the first 43 days of school. And to be honest, that's a lot. Some of our guidance counselors are feeling like they're drowning just because the, the weight of, of having that many kids who are suicidal is heavy. And so, I've spent a lot of the first 45 days of school, running from school to school, helping with those crisis events and with the suicide assessments, getting kids hospitalized if they need it, contacting parents, having them sign the appropriate documentation, doing reentry meetings that come with that. We've done 12 behavior threat assessments on Monday and then all the reentry meetings that go with that. We are sitting at 76 compliance rate. That compliance rate means that right now, with 70% of our, 76% of our referrals are being seen right now, that's number one in the state per stepping stones and DMH, or OMH. And the reason, I, for me, when I see 76%, I think C. Like, that's what grades look like. But, that means that there's been some that have been closed. Some kids, some students have moved out of districts, so they've closed their charts because they're going to a different school. That number reflects all of that. So, that's part of why we're number, we're number one to sit for the state. There's only been 16 out of the 227 referrals, students who have just terminated services, not success, not, not successful. And that was just because their parents, if I'm just frank, their parents really didn't want them seen anymore because they were afraid of recording issues. So, we moved from two and a half clinicians to seven in the last year. And you'll, as you'll see, those, our numbers reflect some of that. So, this is my team, I'm super proud of them. We have Cynthia Devine, who's with the Office of Mental Health, she's at Crescent High School. We have Stacy Peterson, who's at Sims full-time. And then, we have Lindsay Moats, who is at Stepping Stones. And she also is serving at Sims and Star Elementary right now. Katie Scott has just started with us the 18th of August. And so, she's at IVA in Flat Rock in the lower grades at Star Elementary. Kayla Smith works for the county board, and she's at all five schools. And I just want to say this, the county board, previously, we've had a little bit of struggle with, but she's doing excellent work. And even when I contacted her this week, her referral numbers are at like 43, which is too many. Nobody can manage that many. And so, I asked her, I said, "What can I do to help you? We're gonna have to do something to alleviate." She said, "I can do 50 or 60, keep sending them." And so, when you've got an employee like that who is willing to do that kind of work, just, it was an exceptional response, I appreciate her. And then Grace Owen Brink is our special ed mental health counselor. And we're just getting some students on board to that service, but she's doing good work. I'm really proud of these ladies and the work that they do. So, this is a snapshot of the E, the EHR and how I can track kind of what's going on in the district. You can see that it labels it. I can do it in a pie chart, I can do it in a graph, I can do it lots of different ways. But, you can see, just even with the list there, the kinds of things that we're seeing. Now, just, just a caveat on that is, this is my charting and this is our guidance counselor's charting. This is not stepping stones or OMH or Epworth. So, this is just what's being seen by myself and our guidance counselors. And as you can see, there's a, a whole, just a range of issues that are going on. But, some of them are pretty severe. And so, I am so thankful that we're getting the help people because they need it. So, at present, I think we're, we're serving that 227, the nine transfers, 44 closures. There's 174 students presently being seen. Those are the numbers per schools. That averages out to about 25 patients per week per clinician. If you work a 40-hour work week, that leaves you about 15 hours for, for parent meetings and charting. We're about at capacity with the seven that we have right now. That's about as many as they can probably carry in a week's time. So, just perspective on all of that. I think the last slide I have really is just a snapshot of some of the fun things I get to do in speaking. We've done the suicide prevention and we, Healthy Habits, we just did in August. We, we did a slip and slide in the school gym. And just trying to create memorable ways to talk about mental health with people. I've found that if you can make it memorable, they'll, and take it home, that's what matters. For me, if I can communicate in a way that it makes it home and out of the classroom, then I get a passing grade. If it doesn't, if it's just something that happens in a school building and that it doesn't make it home, then I should get it out for the day. So, we're working on ways to communicate differently. So, I love what I get to do, I'm grateful that you allow me to. Can I, is there any questions? Can I answer anything for you guys?
I have a question, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Just as a former school counselor, thank you for all you do. Really appreciate the work that goes into it, and that is a tremendous amount of referrals that's coming through. I think we can all agree, the need's much higher than it has been. Do, see, as far as our clinicians, does all clinicians bill for services?
In our district?
In our district.
County Board does not bill, and my services are not billed for. But, all the other OMH bills, stepping stones bill and Epworth bill.
Okay, so I'll accept just two. And then, are all of our clinicians LPCs?
Not all of them. Some of them are not required to be LPCs per their, per their agency. So, like, OMH doesn't require them to be an LPC because they have an LPC that oversees their services. So, there's several that aren't LPCs, but that's why.
How many of ours are LPCs? Just that are serving our students within the district?
Three.
Three? Do we have any LPCSs?
Um, no.
And they're covered by whoever sees them?
If they've got licensed supervisors, if they've got LPCS, then they're covered by that.
So, all of them are covered by an LPCS?
They're all covered by LPCS. They have, they have a license and supervisor in every agency, or they're being, they're being covered by an LPCS.
That's my only question. Thank you.
Anything contributes to our numbers? I mean, I know when I was growing up, I'm sure there was some folks needing some help, I probably needed it. Probably still do. I, I was looking at anger management up there, I have that quite often, but I work employees, so. But, anyway, I didn't realize we had that many. I guess I just didn't know.
That's a lot.
But, that's a lot of kids. I mean, is it home life? I mean, what, I don't know.
Well, I think there are a lot of things that...
Cell phone?
Yeah.
Oh, well, we took them away at school, maybe we can take them away at home.
You took them away at school? Not so much. The cell phone is huge. And if you read John Heitkamp's book on the Asian Generation, you'll see the unsupervised play and, or the lack of unsupervised play leading to a lack of resilience being built, problem solving being built, those kinds of things, but also cell phone use, usage is huge. I've been doing a lot of research for that very question on the issues of dopamine and serotonin and what's going on in our culture with that and the dopamine highs and the heart crashes with that and the lack of serotonin that's part of that.
Right.
But, I also think our culture is just in a place where, one, where there's a lot of awareness on mental health, but we're, we're also just in a spot across our nation where mental health is in crisis. And if we don't do some things different, I was just reading before I came over here tonight in a book called The Kids Are Not Alright by Philip Wire. And excellent, excellent book on what's going on with our kids. But, to answer part of that question is that we, we are training their brains to fail. And part of that is the overstimulation that starts some with the cell, cell phones. But, just in general, we're training them to forget things because we're not teaching them how to have to really work at what it looks like to study, to be resilient, to emotionally regulate, to be able to manage hard things. I say it in our Healthy Habits all the time, adults do hard things, we do hard things. We are raising adults, we are not raising children. And in order to raise adults, we're gonna have to teach them how to do hard things. We're living in a generation, 2019, Tim Elmore and George Barna began to do some research that began to show us that Generation Z believes that hard is bad, slow is bad, boring is bad, risk is bad, conflict is bad, alone is bad. And if all that's bad, I'm gonna avoid it. So, they pretty much avoid everything, and so, they don't build resilience, emotional regulation, the ability to do hard things, they don't have any bounce back. And so, we are working to communicate this to the schools and spend some time with that, that proactive conversation to say, "We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to go back and back the truck up and try again."
Well, I know with cell phones, I could remember everybody's phone number. Everybody's. I can't even remember mine now unless I look it up. But, but, you know, I guess our generation, I guess we're baby boomers maybe, I don't know. We was forced to do things whether we wanted to or not. We need to raise the two acre garden. That was our babysitter, you know what I'm saying? We had 4W activities, we had FFA activities, we had, I mean, sports. Mama was usually around, or if not, grandma. I was telling somebody a while ago, "My daddy's been dead 15 years, I'm still scared he'll whip me." So, you know, but I see it in the kids that I work. I mean, I worked several students during the summer. And usually after about 15 minutes, I can tell if they got any salt in their bread. I mean, it's, you know, it's just different. And, and you have to prawn some stuff. I mean, I give you a job, I mean, what else do you want? But, I never thought we had that many kids.
They didn't have 900 acres of soybeans to play over summer.
Oh, yeah.
10,000 bales of hay to get up like my dad.
Well, my hat's off to you. I know it's, I pray, I pray for this situation all the time, that we have good, you know, students. I don't know, it just overwhelms me.
We're working at about 10% right now of our student population is in some form of mental health care at this point. That I know of, some of them are not school-based services, so I'm not aware of school-based services unless they choose to share it with me. But, this is October. And we know October and February is the two darkest months of the year for mental health. And we see the most referrals come in in the months of October and February. So, the fact that we've had these, these numbers in the first 45 days before October even got here, I, I tell my staff all the time, "It's coming." This isn't the, this isn't the bad part yet.
How many do you anticipate for the year?
Well, I can't, I can't answer that. I would like to say no more of what we've got. I hope what we're doing is gonna help, but to be frank, I think part of it is parents have got to start discipling their kids a little bit, taking them along the way.
It starts at the house.
And that's not the only thing. There's lots of students who have anxiety disorders and those kinds of things, and parents are struggling with that. That's what I'm here for, is to help with that. But, I will say that we are dealing with a lot of red parents who are really struggling to be the parents. And that's, that's a cultural generational.
Well, if we got a whipping at school, we got one when we got home. And that in home hurt a whole lot worse than at the school. Hats off to y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Ms. Hippe?
Yeah, the only thing I'll add to that, I also think we're serving a lot more students in elementary school than we have before. And I think part of that is because we, we kind of had to convince mental health we had a need in elementary school. But, I, we're seeing our younger kids come in with greater needs. I mean, your K4 and K5 kids coming in with a lot more needs than...
And I guess that's tied to behavior problems too, most of the time. And I guess that's tied to behavior problems too, most of the time.
And thankful, like, with reading, I think, and also, like, her intervention was key. So we're hopeful that they'll learn these strategies early on and they'll be able to do those hard things. In the past, I feel like we didn't refer them, I mean, because they were not being seen. Um, we're hearing a lot of stuff in the house. And now, um, I cannot thank you enough for what all she has done, uh, just her and what she does at our school. She just made a tremendous impact. I really love serving our students. And I told her, like, your child is going to be in this for now, probably.
Ashley and I were going to a weekend training and something like, I want to touch basically on how it goes and what you need. I'm like, I feel like we are light years ahead of where we were two years ago. So, I mean, I talked to her and her friends, they're doing amazing things. And I hope, I hope they're providing strategies that kids will be able to use them. Maybe we can close her. You know, maybe we can give her some of her degrees, that would be my hope. We can give them what they need and then activate from that.
A lot of children receive discipline because they do things they're not supposed to do. And it ended at that, but that didn't restore anybody. And now we have children that do things and they're underlying the fact of why they do it. And now we're, we're able to get help that we weren't able to get in the past to prevent those things from continuing to happen because we're addressing what was called the underlying issues that were causing them to behave, to misbehave the way they were. So we're very thankful that, that we're allowed to have all these.
Well, y'all keep saying that you're, you're, you're so glad to be in District Three. We're very fortunate. We got very moral, godly folks that are leading our schools. And, and just like Christie, I see her all the time, even with my kids, she'd go up to them and she'd say, my Dodge babies. So she didn't forget about them. And a lot of times, y'all are all they got. I mean, the teacher's just all they got.
That's right.
It just, I don't know, it all boils to me. Okay, I'm gonna let you have it.
All right, okay. All right. Well, I, I think maybe we're making a good transition here because we're, I wanted to talk a little bit about that, kinda where we came up with our mission of non-resident student policy and just some, some things that y'all have been talking to me about. And, you know, it really came from, um, Anderson School District Three is a great pa- place to be and people wanted to come to our schools and they still do. And so, there, there's a couple of things that came together with the, the policy changes. So I went back and reviewed it. Uh, we really changed the policy to waive out-of-district tuition in May of twenty nineteen. And the way we adjusted it was to, um, add an administrative rule that allowed an application process and criteria for students to come in. And, and these two, the administrative rule and the policies in your appendix items, I tried to pick out the key points. But the administrative rule is applicable with or without a tuition requirement. And so, I wanted to point that out to you. The policy change said we could waive tuition, it didn't say you have to. Um, and, but I wanted to give you the rationale for, for making the change in twenty nineteen. Part of it came from Act three eighty-eight. Now, if you remember Act three eighty-eight in simplified terms, is, um, it changed where taxes on your primary residence did not help with operational funding for schools. It basically took that out. And so if you look at your tax bill, it will show it being much greater and then it will say tax exempt. And about half of that comes out and that came from Act three eighty-eight. So when that happened, funding for schools was not really tied to house taxes anymore. It was tied to per pupils. And so it didn't matter where those pupils came from. Is, if they were in your district, you got funding for them, um, regardless of where they lived. It was tied to where you were served, not where you lived. And that's become a common thing, they say. Now, there is still some taxes on, on vehicles that's based on where you live. So that was kind of the rationale of why to look at it. And on average, from state funding, we get about six thousand dollars per student. So, um, that was kinda some of the things. The other part of that was, is really when school choice efforts were ramping up. And so the state was talking to us about having policies to allow students in. Now, that's starting to change a little bit more with now the, some of the scholarship programs in the state that, you know, you can't apply for some of these funds for tuition and, and things like that. So, um, one other rationale that I'll kinda put out there is that allowing us to take some out-of-district students kinda let us, um, maintain some of our low student-teacher ratios. And a prime example I'll give you is in K five. Uh, in elementary school, you have an idea of who's gonna show up for K five, but then you don't know exactly who's gonna show up for K five. And so, you can have four teachers set aside for K five and as long as that number follows the trend, you may or may not be okay. But you take an example of, like, Iva Elementary this year, their K five number is about fifteen lower. And so, being able to, to sprinkle in a few extra students at that six thousand dollar per student kinda helps you maintain that low teacher-student ratio and not have to immediately look at eliminating a teacher. And so, it, we tend to see those out-of-district requests at starts in school levels. K five, sixth grade, ninth grade. That tends to be when people are going to move a child. And with our policy, it always says space available, um, you know, good discipline, being able to get there by car, things like that. So that's kind of the rationale of making the change that I wanted to share with you tonight. Now, if you go to the next page, I tried to go and, and kinda show you the highlights of the policy. And if we, if you chose to make a potential change, kind of a recommendation for it. Okay, so on the left side, you see the district may waive all or part of this tuition requirement. That comes straight from the policy adapted in twenty nineteen. Okay, then there's a next statement on there that says the di- district will not charge tuition to students in the following categories. Okay, special accommodations, if you read the, the, kinda the couple of sentences that describe that, it just kinda is an open thing saying, if a child's better served with us instead of somewhere else and they meet the administrative rule, we can take them. Students residing in adjacent county. We have students who, you know, one side of the, the road is Anderson Three, the other side is Anderson Five. And so if they met the criteria, we, we let them in. Um, students planning to move into the district, that, that's students that can show a, uh, contract on land or a contract with a contractor that, you know, they do have intentions of moving in. And typically in a district in that, you give them about six months to show proof that they're making progress if you have a paying policy. Children of employees are always welcome, of course. And students who move during the school year, I think this is so important and the basis of it is right. It's never good for a child to move schools if they don't have to. And so, that protects a child that, say the parent had to move mid, mid-year from our district to a surrounding district, they don't have to move during that school year as long as they can still get here and they're still meeting our requirements. And then foreign exchange students, because technically they're sponsored by a family but don't live with the family. Okay, if you wanted to change the policy to go back to charging, here's some verbiage that I think you all could consider. Okay, the board will approve the out-of-district tuition costs during the yearly budget process. Um, I think that would be the time to set it. And with that, I think you could also still say, our choice this year is not to charge out-of-district if you wanted to. But it leaves it open enough, again, to, to let you set that when we're looking at the budget cycle. Okay, um, I do think it's to, should still say, the district will not charge tuition to students in the following categories. And I put children of employees first because you've heard me say many times that we want our employees' children here. That means they're vested with us, that increases the likelihood of their stay. Students planning to move into the district, this has been a part of the policy a long time. And I researched some other district policies and the majority of them don't charge students who are planning to move in. Students who move during the school year, again, is a part of the policy that's been there a long time and I see it in a lot of them. Um, students previously admitted under a tuition waiver, if we were to go back and start charging, I would recommend that those students presently who are with us and in good standing are grandfathered in because I don't think you change the rules on anybody and it goes back to, I don't think it's good to move a child. You don't have to move if they're being successful. And then foreign exchange students. So, I just kinda wanted to show you that side by side as you think about it. And then the other thing I'll show you here is, um, kinda did a summary of out-of-district students. And with this, I will say, um, and I've said this, I think, in the last meeting, Flat Rock has not taken hardly any out-of-district students that were not employees' children in the last two to three years. Star Elementary, even though their number is larger of non-employee students, they have not taken a, a lot in the early grades. Really probably in the last two years, we more or less closed down the program, except Iva Elementary. And we didn't, we didn't, um, advertise it a whole lot. But you see the numbers here and, and the way I broke them down, I wanted you to see employee children, non-employee children, and then total. But also, when you see average O D, that's out-of-district per grade level, that includes everybody. So if you look at Flat Rock, that, there's one point five children per grade level that might be an out-of-district child. Now, that's not per class, that's per grade level. So if you've got four K five classes, that's one extra child in your K five class. Okay, uh, you follow through, Star Elementary has, has more. Um, but when you look at out-of-district per grade level, okay, that nine point six, that still spans K five through fifth grade, talking about every single teacher and you're talking about thirty classrooms thereabout. If you look at the non-employees, so take the, um, employees' children out and just purely out-of-district kids, you see that number goes down. And so, I think the data shows that we have not significantly overcrowded any classrooms taking out-of-district children. We've just done it strategically, like I say, to kinda help balance the cost when it gets close of cutting a teacher or not. And so, um, and again, the numbers in elementary school are inflated, if they're inflated, it's in your upper level grades because like I say, we really shut it down at Flat Rock and Star about three years ago with a few exceptions. So I'll, I'll give that to you and then entertain whatever discussion y'all wanna have about it.
Anybody got any?
When the policy was changed in two thousand nineteen, what, what did the policy state? Did it say that you could charge or not charge out-of-district tuition or it said that you had to charge?
It, it said, um, give me a second, uh...
I'm pretty sure it, it was verb.
It said that you had to, there wasn't an option either way?
Pre, pre-two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
Yeah, it, uh, actually, went back to the old paper book. No, that's the wrong one. I did find, I found it. Um, I think it did more... It, it says, "They may attend, provided space is available and upon payment of established tuition fees." So, that more or less said they will pay tuition.
And there wasn't an option of the board to waive it for that year or...
No.
Pretty much they had to.
They, they had to. Now, the, then it also goes on to say that, you know, it will be established yearly by the board to, as what amount may be. Because there was a formula when it was based on house taxes of this percentage of this. I, I didn't understand it when I read it, Matthew could've deciphered it for me, but, uh, there was kind of a way that you figured out what that amount should look like. But it was based on, um, home taxes before Act three eighty-eight. And most districts, um, when I talk to them, because I've talked to the other Anderson County districts, um, most of them charge between thirty-five hundred and four thousand dollars, which is following kind of what that... And, you know, Anderson Two has adopted an, an administrative rule to waive the tuition requirement, but they have yet to post it online. Jason has told me it was adopted, I saw it on their agenda, but I can't see it printed anywhere.
So all other Anderson County districts are charging right now except that particular district?
Yes, except for Anderson Two and except for us.
Does that, that mean the other districts don't have the option of waiving fees on individual cases?
Uh, not per their policy. Now, I think most of them have in their, when we were doing the original, um, when charging, there was that statement in there, if the student owns real estate with an assessed value of three hundred dollars or more, he or she is entitled to, to attend school without a charge. And during that time, we would have, and that property had to be in the child's name.
We had a bunch of them.
And we would have, um, families who put three hundred dollars of assessed value in the child's name. I think the other districts still have that, 'cause that's pretty much a part of the old policy. Um, they, the majority of them I saw still had the one about if they were about to build in that area and could show the, um, proof of buying a lot and having a house plan and things like that. So those were the two areas that the board allowed it.
I think we charged twenty-four hundred dollars to start with, didn't we?
I think it was around that.
We had a few down here in Abbeville County right on the line.
Mm-hmm.
That's one we...
And, and we had a few, um, right on the line there, um, near, I guess it's Michelin Road or Masters Boulevard. We get a, a few coming that way.
Twenty-four hundred was the most we ever charged.
I think so.
Back at, back then when we were charging. But, um, seems like we, we had, we have something in the policy too about if, if child had, um, parent had custody, one lived out of district, one, whoever had the custody, that's, that we allowed them to come.
Yeah, and, and if it's true joint custody, if it's true joint custody, they can go on either parent's address.
Okay.
Um, with that.
I knew, I knew it was worded some kind of way.
Mm-hmm. And, you know, one reason to look at this again is because of being able to get the, the scholarships. But what I'll say, in the article I saw last week, most of those scholarships are going to private school kids. And, uh, your private schools are making a big advertisement to their kids, like, uh, Southside Christian and Saint Joseph's. I mean, they're, they're, and so, um, not, not saying anything's wrong with that, but, uh, I don't know that we'd ever wanna make a big advertisement of that just because it goes back to, we don't have a ton of space to take a lot of students that way. Of course, if we go back to, to waiving, to charging tuition, I will encourage those who, who contact us to try to get the scholarship. Uh, other, um, data shows that a lot of people who are getting that po- those scholarships are using it to buy computers. So, um, but it definitely, I think the state's gonna ask us for a more defined policy on admitting non-resident students. I think that's coming, um, with a lot of this too.
Will the principals still be allowed to have discretion on who they let in even if we charge?
Oh, yes, I would still follow administrative rule, the administrative rule to, to establish the criteria because you've still got to have an agreement. And, and in there too, in the verb is, I would, and I think it's on the administrative rule, is that this is reviewed annually. So at the end of the year, because there, there have been some, we have told they had to go back to their district and it was usually an attendance problem. They were not getting here. And so, it doesn't mean, even if somebody pays, you have to take them. Okay, they would still go back to the administrative rule. If we had space, if they met the criteria, then they could come in. I did have one parent this year ask me if they paid, if we'd, I'd allow them to come in. I said, no, K five at Star is already full. And so, and we would still have to follow that class size thing unless you told me to, you all told me to waive it, which I would not recommend, but, um...
The only other question is, we said we would want a grandfather in and I am in complete agreement with that. Anyone that's already attending and not paying out-of-district fees. And that would be just for those students, not their siblings or it would include any younger siblings that had not started school yet?
Um, I would let, I don't, we don't guarantee siblings a spot, um, a spot if it's available. Now, I would, I would encourage some conversation about that. Um, because again, we're, we're here about children. And so I think that's a, I wouldn't wanna have to ask a parent to say, okay, your child's happy here and, at the middle school and, you know, but, but now you've got a first grader and we're not taking them unless you pay and a hardship made them move that middle schooler. I think that would be a terrible time to move a child. Um, so, I would be okay with that as a policy, again, as long as everything's in good s- standing, as long as we had space. Um, I think, I think we owe that to any child we take in.
I'm just thinking, I have ten, ten years difference between my two... I'm just thinking, I have 10, 10 years difference between my two children. It would be hard if I had to provide transportation for one, one school, another one in another district. You'd want them to be there together.
Right, right.
If at all possible.
Was this something the committee, y'all wanna look over this further? And, and then maybe, um, I guess when we get closer to budget time, we really need to discuss it and hammer it then. Is it okay with y'all?
We need it in place by next budget.
May, April? What time, Matthew?
Oh, we need it first and second reading.
The earlier the better, just because I think it could have an impact on how we look at future enrollment. And we'd like to have conversations with principals earlier in enrollment, so that we don't have any surprises when they go in the hiring season. Communicate that clearly and as early as we possibly could.
January, February?
We typically send them in January.
Okay, y'all, uh, y'all get time, y'all get together and, and, uh, look over ours and, uh, joining districts and...
I, I'll just say, I looked at a lot the other day, and we probably have the most up-to-date policy of anybody around us. Because some of their policies go back to like 2006 and they're outdated. And I even found one of our policies that go back to 2015 and it still says our kids can transfer to Anderson Five's Career Center. I'm gonna bring that to y'all to delete that part of it here soon.
I think that'll be good, and I think we, that'll give us the information in time before, you know, we work on the referendum and the other things. Because I think our taxpayers have, have a right to know that for charging out-of-district fees.
Is that okay with you?
Mm-hmm, that's fine. And, um... I can send y'all a new copy of the policy, but it's, it's attached to the appendix items. And the, the recommendations are in the PowerPoint too of the changes.
Thank you, appreciate y'all. All right, we are at the action item, um, portion of the, um, agenda. And let me put my eyes on. We need a, uh, certification for delegates for the 20, 25, uh, assembly.
Right, yes, we need a delegate and a alternate.
Alternate. First of all, are you going?
Yeah, I like going to that one, I always go to that one.
Well, I'll nominate, uh, Mr.
Well, I don't always wanna be the delegate now, I did it last time, didn't I do it last year?
I don't know.
I think I did it last year. I don't mind being an alternate.
You did a good job, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like, I would like Justin to do it.
Are you going?
I'm not gonna attend that one.
You gonna be able to go to that one?
I had not planned on it. Um, does not mean I could not.
All right, I still nominate you as delegate. I ain't got a second yet, but I nominate.
I second it.
All right. All in favor of Mr. Balt Knight to represent us? Sound like a railroad, but you know. All right.
Did y'all see that?
Good job, Jim.
How'd you see that?
Hey, you elected me chair, I mean.
Do we need an alternate?
We need an alternate, now you can pick.
I can pick an alternate.
Yeah, and what I would say is, we pick an alternate, we would already have a space for Trip. So if something happened and Trip couldn't go, we could just slide in the alternate if nobody else is planning to attend the actual conference. But we do need to send an alternate so we'll have a voting member.
I would just say whoever was able to go.
All right, nominate Justin.
I'm gonna put Justin's name in the hat.
I second it.
We have one. Y'all love this, don't you? We have a nomination and a second. All in favor? All right. Thank you, brother.
You're asking me to pose, I don't think you voted.
Won't give my opportunity to do that. That's what you call railroad. Thank y'all. That is a good conference, I just, I got so many things going on, I'm not gonna be able to attend at all.
I do too, brother.
Mine's medical.
Yep, I get it, I understand.
I got a wedding together.
You do?
You got a son getting married.
All right. This time, um...
You wanna go with that for us?
Yes, um, second reading, uh, live streaming of board meetings. I'll just turn it over to the policy committee if that's okay.
All right.
See, I've looked over the policy for live streaming. And one thing that I had noticed as I was looking back through just the law for that, it says that a public school governing body may only adopt or revise its policy at a regularly scheduled meeting, which must be successfully livestreamed. And I don't think we're prepared to do that at this particular meeting. So I wanted to see if we could table that until, um, we're ready to livestream. It has to start at the beginning and go all the way through. It was just looking into the policy, into the...
Yeah, we, we could table it and do the final approval, the November meeting, and we'll make sure we're livestreaming.
I just don't wanna move forward with it if, you know, with that saying in here that it has to be livestreamed.
Do we have the January and the, at that?
Well, that, that's what's kinda conflicting information is we don't, we don't have to livestream until January and we're supposed to pass the policy by January, but they say we have to livestream to pass the policy. So, but we have the capability. And so there's, I don't think there's any, um, I don't think we'll get fined for doing it early, so we'll do it next month. Yeah, probably just with say just...
Okay. You wanna put that in the form of motion to table it?
I'd like to make a motion to table, um, the live streaming policy. I don't know. Thank you.
I'm gonna have a second, all right, all in favor? Bye-bye, okay, took care of that one. All right, next one is, uh, policies, GCB, professional staff contracts and compensation.
And this really just came from the, that Educator Assistance Act. And we just had to add the specific dates and also about giving notice, projected salary, et cetera. So what's highlighted in yellow is what was changed. And really, we had the gist of it, just didn't have the May 1st date in there, May 11th, even though we've been following those, because it's law for years.
Policy committee recommends policy GCB as written.
Second.
All right, it's the second reading, have a motion and a second, all in favor? Bye-bye.
Okay, and then the last one really, it just, to me, is kind of a restatement of the policy you just passed. But it specifically talks about staff compensation. And again, it talks about, um, the notice of the adjustments to the salary schedule before May 1st. And then that, we have to have contracts by May 11th. And then nothing about support staff pay has changed in there.
I make a motion to approve the policy GBC staff compensation.
Second.
All in favor? All righty. You got anything else you need to talk about?
That's it, we're good.
All right, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session for contractual matter.
I like the motion in executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Bye-bye. Thank y'all for what you do, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank y'all, we appreciate y'all.